All right, this is our meeting in order. Seven twelve, June seven. Rockwell.
Yes, Chairman Baker.
Here.
Okay, Trustee Harris.
Here.
Trustee Rasen, present. And Trustee Davis.
Aye, here.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the, I'm sorry, is the approval of the agenda. A matter of consideration, I have full business. I did tell the clerk to put on the agenda Gateway Update in general because I knew that there were going to be a number of approaches. I still want to leave, I want to ask Brett if I could switch the artwork around with, I want to say Gateway, let's just say Gateway History. Is number two, and then Survey. Still waiting, so Gateway History would be one, Survey would be two, and the Graphic Act would be three. Any other changes to the agenda? Motion being ordered to accept the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Any change in it?
Oh, my motion to adjourn the agenda.
Have a second, any discussion? On the favor?
Not sure.
Stranger danger. Approval of the May third minutes. Motion has been made by Commissioner Davis to accept the planning permission of May minutes as presented.
Second.
Second, uh, Rasen, on the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the hearing is done. Communication correspondence workshops. There was a workshop in the past month, it was my intent to go, it was a conflict at work, and my mom was in the hospital, so I couldn't get. Did any, Brett, did you give us anything? Didn't have anything to do with anything that we were considering.
What workshop?
That workshop that, um...
Was it yours?
Yeah, yeah, the president called.
The housing one.
Oh, the housing, oh, no.
No, I didn't do it actually.
No.
Any other communications correspondence? Has anyone, um, experienced?
Oh, put in your box, the music in the park. I'll put a flag on your box. Since July eight, Friday in July, and first Friday in August.
Uh, and there were, Karen put up the poster on the front and the back and the side door.
Jeff, you're invited.
We're going to put this up on the county's side.
Okay.
You said you said. Yeah, give him a big one. Yeah, because Karen put the big poster on the front and the side door, and she asked for two more.
Sure.
Okay.
And Rocket House is sixteen, um...
July.
Correct, and that flyer, we should have that in the next, uh, two days, it's going to go on the school kids.
Okay. Does anybody have anything on Row Cellar today?
It is August thirteenth.
Eighteenth, oh, yeah. And then the Cantor Walk.
Is August the sixth. And then New Haven Reunion is August twenty-seventh. At the Community Park of New Haven.
August twenty-seventh?
Right. So we have full schedule for it.
Yes.
July eleventh.
Okay, so this live, live music and everything on August twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Can we have fire for the reunion too?
Okay, uh, in fact, James Henry just called me today, he was putting it together, so probably within the next ten percent of weeks.
I'm going to make sure.
We have booth information and everything, and I think we're going to go.
We're going to show.
No.
You mean for Row Cellar?
For Row Cellar?
No, for August community, for the August community.
I just hear, I almost said new booths. I said, I just hear you said, you said somebody's putting it together, I just hear.
No, James Henry, always, that's what, generally, that's what.
Well, somebody asked me, you know what, maybe booths is the wrong word, like a family tent.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Same, of course, you just throw it first and first space.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when you said, when you said, yeah.
Wow, okay. You got that? Getting busy, getting to New Haven. Awesome, okay, um... Let's deal with, okay, now, um, hands of consideration. Gateway Project Update, um... Find the gate, all of you, something, um, that I gave called Gateway Project, and basically what it is, it, um, I wanted to present something a little different than what was presented in terms of the survey, to solicit more information. And this thing is not to hinder anything, but to start a relationship, um, with the community about a long-range involvement, because the Gateway Project is not a fly-by-night thing, it's for to be, everything that we want it to be is going to take some time, and it's going to be done in layers. And that's what I wanted to present, so this, I wanted to, everybody to take it home, take a look at it a couple of days, make your edits, add things to it, and we need to find a place to put it online where it sits for a while, and they can add on things. I tried to make my survey questions were more general. I just want you to take a peek at it, and have it a planning permission project where we're developing a relationship with the community, so that when people find something and see something that they might be interested, that they might find interesting to add, in terms of the message that we're trying to create when people are going by that intersection, um, that it could be programmed in, in time. So take a look at it, you know, because it's, it's, uh, it's not as long as it looks, um, it's just me and these little boxes, you know, I wasn't real great with these boxes, but the questions, I'm hoping, will give you an idea of where we're coming from. I kind of made reference to the previous, the things that were mentioned in the previous survey, but that survey was not conclusive, it didn't talk about community ideas, they just presented ideas and wanted you to react to those, and I wanted this one to just kind of like open it up a little bit more, to let people bring ideas to us. And at some point, if we have an idea box, somebody writes them, oh, I was driving through Milford today, and I saw the sweetest fountains, you know, or whatever, and took a picture, and here they are, so that it, you know, it's inclusive, um, and I think that might satisfy some of the objections from some members of council as well. The other thing is an article from nineteen ninety-three, and as I said earlier, there are a couple of, still might recognize, recognizable faces on that, from The Voice, and it talked about the gazebo would be the village center. When you read this, we'll see, we're talking about the exact same space that we're talking about right now, grassy and main street. So how many years need to go by before something is done? It's like an eternal dream, it's a dream everlasting, and it would be great if we could get this thing done like we did, the master plan, and, uh, that, that took so long to get done, and our parks are wrapped. So it'd be nice, you know, just to get this thing moving. So I want you guys to read this article, as I said earlier, it's not just to show you how cute Rettina were twenty years ago, but the fact that it was important, it was important to, to, it was important at that time that we present a positive image, it's just that the village has grown now, and it's gone from the hub to grassy, and it'd be nice if we could be a part of the vanguard that leads this movement into getting this, those signs up and starting to create a landscape. For improvement. We work pretty cute though. Okay, that's it for me, Brett?
Still got that card in the rack.
I was gonna ask the same question. You still pull that up?
We'll go find it. I don't know if this actually was for planning permission, more, actually more for council, and they asked for a render. Council hasn't been presenting with this yet, so, um...
Can we give a, Brett? Like, was that what you said?
Yeah, right. But I tell you, I'm, I'm at the point, I'm not, even council accepted at the next meeting, I'm done, done messing with this. I will... Set on the phone, if the council wants, needs to know the numbers, but I guess I will. Did y'all see, the, the sign is in there, and he, he puts the trees and, uh, maybe a little path walk, or, I'm not, be honest with you, I'm not, really not sure what council actually wants. I mean, other than, we were just, I mean, I was just presenting the sign to them, so the sign hasn't changed, the sign is still the same, the, the, uh, and that layout that one gentleman from the positive county office put together, but this is, that's a number on there, and this was actually for council, I mean, if y'all can pass that around and take a look at it. And that state beyond their dollar mark, they didn't want me to go over twenty-four thousand, so it's right at twenty-three.
Nine ninety-nine.
So hopefully this satisfies council, and at least we can move with the sign, and that, you know, the other things, those, those are not coming, you do have a couple park benches in there, um, and then it's more, you know, some trees, some landscaping, uh, like I said, I don't know what else they want, and, you know, now I'm looking at the area itself, uh, you know, if not that sculpture that Chuck had, that's probably, probably a good idea for a gazebo in there, I mean, that would probably look a lot nicer, since the sculpture wasn't, uh, going to be part of it, or if that's the case, that the sculpture not going to be part of it, I think gazebo would look nice in there, you know, and they talked about park, they wanted some park benches, I think, or something like that there. The county, actually, I've been in touch with the county, and I'm waiting on a phone call back from Bill Mestelich, um, and seeing when they were going to come in and start cleaning the shit drain. So I reached out to him yesterday, and I haven't gotten a call back from the county drain commission. As I seen that everything was okay, Tony Rockwell had signed off on it, President Dobrik had signed off, and, uh, I think, uh, our county commissioner had signed off on it, or had sent a letter to approve the work to be done. No, this is it, that's all I have on it.
This is a lot. So, my, my question, like I said, I was at the last half of the meeting too. And the only thing I can ask to change is for the committees, the commissioners' perspective is that they needed some help visualizing. I think there's more details, the visualization, and, um, and certainly while this was something that was pulled together for council, I would, just in terms of support, um, I would recommend the planning commission just, uh, support, Brett, are you recommending that they accept?
I'm recommending that they accept the plan, I mean, the sign as it's presented. They, what council wanted to see was whatever was not cost to raise it, to raise the sign, and that's, that's, that's the cost in there for them to raise the sign, and they put in, um, the measurements on it, or I should say, majority of council won't dispute that.
Right, and I think the majority of you guys were at meetings to see how they respond, uh, the more support, the more it moves forward. So, you know, what I recommend is that we support what you recommend to council at this time, and that can be just put in the form of a motion.
I just had a question, a general question, so it's going to be considered to allow the park?
We have to call it a park, because for one, we don't own the property, and we, and until MDOT, MDOT is going to dedicate some of that property to the village, but not all of it, we don't want all of it, because for the simple fact, we don't want to take over the responsibility of maintaining.
Yeah, it's looking at the map.
We, if we take up, well, we agreed to, to, to maintain the, the path, and it's, it's a ten-foot path in there, we take, we, we've already agreed to maintain the land out there, but what we don't want to take is ownership, because if, what, if we take the ownership, then we own that part of the street also, so then we take on a lot, I mean, we take on the responsibility of that sixty-foot of Main Street, of Main Street going towards the light, then we have to do it, right, right now, the county has, I mean, that's the counties, um, I mean, the county maintains it, and also the piece on grass, so it's like, whatever that, I don't know, the sixty feet, um, this side of grass, uh, that, I mean, that, that intersection, we don't have to maintain it, we don't want that, but we took ownership, we would.
I was, the reason I was asking is just that maybe Jeff answered this, and, oh, is there a way, if anybody's even interested in it, would that be an increased speed limit on grass?
To reduce the speed limit on grass?
As you're entering the meeting.
Only, really, the way MDOT would do most, the way MDOT does their studies, they do the same things, if there were more incidents of pedestrian accidents or other things that's occurring that would cause them to do a, a speed study, but I...
I just thought that there was an adjacent, I was trying to look it up, it was real long, but I thought there was like an adjacent park thing, and...
There may, there may be, and that's regulations, but they're the ones who control the speed at least now.
But if we're not calling it a park, then...
Yeah.
There was means that there's only five, five, and grass is forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
That's a dispute. Are you going to be twenty-five? It's grass.
Your kids off to school every day, you gotta make a left-hand turn, and people are barreling, barreling down the soft shoulder there, I wish it was a little less, it's like...
Down the what?
They go down the soft shoulder, like even the garbage trucks will pass you, when you're bringing the mega left and the decorum coming, coming this way.
Well, right.
It's just brutal, and so, and there are a lot, I, you know, and I, I don't know the amount, but...
There is a white line, which means they shouldn't fast.
Yeah, they're doing it, they're law enforcement, they're...
Anyway, what, what needs to be done is the, the shift department needs to be, uh, mainly during school hours.
Right.
Just asking to be for, um, some, some coverage, some coverage out there during that, during this time, so. I know it used to be really bad there by the heights, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
And it used to be worse, for some reason, when I say that real expansion, it's not as bad, but making that left, it's scary.
Well, I worry about kids walking, but...
Well, that's why it needed to be, I think, expanded. And even at this corner, just like here, I, when they put that end of ship in there at, at that light, yeah, I mean, that's just asking for action, that's right there.
It gets really backed up.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
So you're saying that since they've done it, it's been more backed up now, coming through at the light here?
Left-hand turns are very...
Well, because you never had a left-hand turn.
Right.
So, yeah, but that's what happens, it starts to back up there, it can't turn, and then it's just normal. Is there enough, is there enough time to clear the stacking of the cars that come in on, that, that would be, that would be...
A rush hour at five times, especially if you have a nineteen coming from the grass.
Yeah, because if you're coming in this way, you may, you may get one car through there, if you're lucky.
Because if that's the case, those timings could change, because I think they've got a lot of that, a lot of that, so, the question is, question is, who's got jurisdiction in the corner? Is it, is it the county, and we can't let the traffic department, we talked to about that. We have a similar issue at twenty-three Chesterfield Road in Chesterfield, it's all of a sudden started backing up, that exchange, where they go, like, times change, so, we're asking to have a control, a time, what they call is a time study.
So would you want us to contact them, or do you want...
It would be best to dispute it, you contact them, either TPW, President, or, they request. First, the best thing they ask first is when's the last time a study's been done, and has a study been done since the works been done?
I did contact them that one time, and he, Steve, Steve Milton is who I talked to from MDOT, and they were, no, Drew Hill, I mean Drew, Drew Butler, Drew Butler was going, and they were going to do a, a study, and I think, and then, if they did the same thing, and they got a twenty-six in grass, and put it right here at New Haven Road, it'd be excellent, yeah.
But why don't they do that same thing?
But, yeah, Drew.
Generally, in general, I think they need to do the study to see if it dictates that, because if you got a lot of cars that are stacking up, and people are having a hard time to get going through, that generally triggers that, like with this light here, and then like twenty-six a few years and stuff, it's just surf time today, it's not a consistent thing, it's just surf times.
Right, so they would change a lot, I mean, make the light longer or shorter, or...
Then what you'll find is people will go past New Haven Road to twenty-six, because it goes much, much nicer, yeah, it's, uh...
I do it.
That's what we do, we don't turn up there.
It's too tight, it feels too tight, not enough room to, yeah.
Twenty-six off the new way, you get a button.
Okay, um, motion would be in order, what I recommend is a, a motion be presented where we basically, um, support Brett's recommendation for the sign as presented with the heights, so that as a part of the record, it's clear on what happened from one month to the next. And that he presented this village of the way of a gateway sign artwork. So one is an approval, is a recommendation for approval, and the other is just supportive information, because this artwork will change in time.
Did you make the motion, did you make the motion?
I'm making a recommendation that when you make the motion. I don't, I don't know, but it doesn't make any difference, but, but, I do enough talking.
Will you make the motion up there in a second? I want that, we'll have to go back and repeat.
This would be a motion by Commissioner Davis to recommend that the council accept the New Haven sign as recommended by Commissioner Harris, including, which this, this time includes the heights, I still looking at you, I gotta get used to, looking at you, bother you, and that includes the, the heights and the measurements as required by council. And then he also presented artwork, we have approved in the artwork, we're just recognizing it, so there's a reference of date when it first was taken.
Right.
I'll second Jeremy.
Oh, right, the motion has been made in second, that we, um, send our council representative back with a recommendation to move this project forward, um, with the welcome village of New Haven sign, adding on the heights and the dimensions, and a piece of art. That would change over time, and it's very important that we keep reminding them of that, because it seems to me that the last, um, meeting, they didn't give, like, they wanted to see us, you know, a portrait, and it can't happen like that, if, you know, you give them an idea, building before. Okay, so the motion has been made in second, on the favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else, Brett?
No, just keep in mind that because we don't own the property, and once, once the sign is approved, we have to then ask the county for a permit, and that permit is only for, is only good for a year, so, anything that they want to do or change after that, they're going to have to go back in and ask for another permit.
And is that how it ends, to get another permit?
No.
Not, not, especially if you go in the first one, say these are going to be a face project, right?
Absolutely, yeah, they, they... This says faces, it just doesn't reflect everything that we, hopefully, we'll start seeing coming out of the survey, and just, you know, so we can have that whole involvement, but this, this says faces.
Well, and that's why we told the engineers not to put too much into it, because it, what we get then is what they're going to be looking at, and then if it's something that we need to go back at again, then that's, you know, trees or stuff like that, and that, but they always say clear path.
But I, I think this does an excellent job of doing placement, and I, and hopefully, uh, your colleagues on the council will be able to get some kind of vision as to what's going on, um, I think this is, this is one of those, for, you know, projects like this are not going to happen overnight, and they need to, need to realize that, and we're moving forward, you know, already, so, good job. As a matter of discussion, uh, I got approached by a neighbor, and I just want to get some information from, from this committee, if you guys just help me out, here you see these big rocks that are all over the community, uh, the people using them as bumpers, you know, close off transportation areas, um... as bumpers, you know, close off transportation areas, um, and there is a...
A van or something?
Yeah, yeah. Where do those come from and whose responsibility is it if residents are feeling vulnerable, their backyard is vulnerable to, to open excess of one of our streets, and they wanted like six of these boulders? Is that, is, is, is that BP got to do, is that us or is that the...
You mean just the property?
No.
No, we're not over that.
The builder or the community does it?
Now, we're gonna, what is it, rocks roots up there on, on, on Grashit, before virtue to provision.
Okay, so...
They can't just arbitrarily block off a road.
No, it's not a road.
If you're talking about their backyard, it's on their property, they can probably put whatever they want unless it's big enough where they need it prepared.
And they, they went to...
Go to any landscaping place and purchase a lot instead of property.
The question was, uh, whether or not it was a village thing or whether or not it was a, you know, who they bought from, the community, and I did not know the answer to that, um, but I saw the problem, you know, the openness.
So you're saying that a road kind of ends...
Somebody started driving, people drive in the back of their property.
The back of the property.
And they're concerned because their children there. And so they wanted to put five, six boulders, but they thought, well, can you ask the village? I don't think the village has anything to do with that.
Is it some subdivision? I don't think that's something the village is gonna be involved in.
So would it, at this point, would it be the, the building or their homeowner who's just, who's concerned about his career?
Yeah, you gonna take the liability, I mean...
They're gonna go on their property.
The liability is...
Yes, going on their property. And, uh, and, and a former resident apparently used to have like a sixteen-wheeler and came back and forth and then they moved. Now it's wide open, people are driving in and coming in again.
I say both buys a sixteen-wheeler in Marston.
Do what?
I say, I say buys a sixteen-wheeler just in Marston.
And put a sign in the middle of it, says no trespass, rest in the middle.
But basically, even if, I mean, that's not a bad idea, but that would be if the homeowners...
So the building's in like a bigger, I mean, do that.
Right, okay, with the building, I mean, with the community.
Either the homeowner or if it's in a common area, the homeowners association is there.
Yeah, that's what I wanna know, if it was a, a homeowners association thing.
Well, probably would be if it's in one of these subdivision, one of the three, there were subdivision that has...
Which one is it?
That has, uh...
Is it Amber's or Denver?
Well, they would, they would probably be, if they got a homeowners association, they need to go through them first.
What would come in on another gender items?
Your only purpose.
Leonard?
No, nothing to report to us.
Really?
Question to you, Leonard. Have, have, um, the place on Victoria?
Yes, the house, the...
The business?
The business, oh, no, yeah.
Have they been, are you working on anything with them?
What I believe is, yeah, they were told that they need to get the last week in plan and that I think they just got something from the board and going to possibly look at the drainage.
Well, they had a fence or, yeah, they were under, Leonard.
Yeah, there was that. Nothing's come back, it's gonna be set up. There was another, there was another property, there were, there were a couple other, and I guess I shouldn't have planned to report, I couldn't put them in there. There were, there were two requests that came through the building department, a lot combinations, one on Victoria, there was a single-family residence, purchased a lot south of them. I'll recommend, it doesn't come through plan...
South, south of who?
South of the existing home. I don't have the address. He's on, obviously on the east side of Victoria, but there's a small, there was a small vacation or an undeveloped lot to the south. So we can come back and go in Marston. Um, and there was another request for a lot splitting combination that came in from, after the, um, Grashit, spoke with him, he's not only doing the split in the combination, but the combination, since the combination of property would take what was a like industrial and general business.
Right.
He's looking, looking to resolve the whole thing, whole in general business, so conform with the master plan, that entire parcel front in Grashit would be general business.
Okay, when you, when you take a look at that, please look at, uh, where, where is he gonna enter once he combines us? Because I looked at that and...
Yeah, right now, since he indicated that the house, the, the single-family house, he's planning on keeping it for another year or two as a rental property, so there's that. And after that, they're looking to do a tear down, potentially put them on the property.
Okay, but you, in the front, where it's where the house, the home is here, and then they, and then they were combining that whole front piece of the general business? They're putting that together, okay? Right now, today, right next to that house is the entryway into their yard.
Into...
Now, now, down here where Franchot Drive goes in is the only other entry.
To their, to the cul-de-sac.
Would be to that, okay, and if they combine those lots together, they won't have that other entry. What bothered me is because of the bigger trucks and whatnot, you know, now it's a dirt, I mean, it's a dirt road, but if they're coming in off that, uh, Franchot Drive, is that gonna be the only entryway?
Let me take another look at that tomorrow. I don't have the paperwork, but I have paperwork in the office, that's a good, that's a good point. I, I, I believe the way I remember it, that they were leaving that access road up and that wasn't gonna be combined, that that was gonna be left, I thought that was gonna be left separate.
Okay.
It's part of the larger, like industrial back.
Okay, but, yeah, but when I look at the Hanover nine and three process, I meant that, yeah, I might have, was gonna call you on that too.
One last thing I wanna say is, uh, I think it's important that the, we probably that continues to move forward and council meetings are not lasting as long as they used to. So I'm just saying, if anybody can squeeze council meeting in and be there on time, um, to... No, because you're not, I listen to like that.
I'm gonna have time to look.
Oh, excuse me, okay. Uh, this is, it's just important, I just think that, um, you know, when we're dealing with something that we're working on, doing the forums for, all right.
Jeremy, if you're not doing anything next to, no.
Motion is in order to adjourn.
Motion is adjourned.
Is there support?
Second.